You hear, you hear, you hear. I gotta work.
I apologize for being late. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the Father and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet and be in a, live in a country where we can work for the taxpayers and citizens. Great privilege that we had to do that. We thank you for the citizens of Howard County. We thank you for the great state of Indiana, and we thank you for the great country that we live in. We ask that you could please watch over the farmers right now as they're about to head out and harvest. You know, some are already doing that, so watch over and protect them and help the drivers and everyone to have patience and be aware of them out in the fields. Watch over us, guide us, and help us with the decisions that we make in your son's name that we pray.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. Okay, ready for special announcements and recognitions.
Well, I'm gonna give this a try. My voice is about to go on, but we're gonna try it. I'll try it, see what happens there. All right, this, this is for the Employee of the Month nomination. Actually, it's a group that we're gonna recognize this time, and I'm gonna have to just do it because there's no way of keeping this secret. So, the entire IT department started working their butts off. This is actually what's on here. At 1:30 a.m., the day of the software crash, the boys had the entire county pretty much up and running by 9:00 a.m. They had to put hands on every computer in the county. None of us would have been able to do our job had it not been for these guys, especially Nick and Dean, who were in and out of every county office, building and office. And Chuck Picker, just who nominated these guys. So, the four IT department, you guys are County Employee of the Month.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Dean?
There you go.
Jeremy?
They wanna take their picture.
Ryan?
And Nick. Yeah.
We can take it.
Those are awesome.
Let me see, Jack. Thanks, guys.
Guys, good job.
You know, we call upon our IT department sometimes on the spur of the moment. You know, we'll be in a meeting and it's like, the screen won't work, the computer won't work, it won't connect, it won't do something. So, who do we call? The IT department, kinda like the Ghostbusters, you know? We call upon them, and they're always there to help us out, get us going. And guys, gals, we, we can't appreciate you guys enough because you're always there for us, and somehow you always work your magic to get us connected, to get us going. So, we just appreciate it. You know, you bring us to the folks at home on these meetings, and we just can't say thank you enough for what you do, and you're always Johnny on the spot. So, sometimes when we screw it up, you fix it.
And they go make fun of us then.
Or if I have cellphone issues.
Yes, that too, Jeff.
Which is regularly.
So, no, we truly appreciate you guys, so thank you for all you do for us. Are there any other special announcements or recognitions?
Sure.
Your voice is starting to sound like mine.
Well, I know, I was just trying to be like you.
Okay.
No, not really.
Not really. Okay, approval of previous meeting minutes. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Your previous meeting minutes are approved. Thank you for having me. Okay, looks like we're ready for departmental business and reports. First one up is our Howard County Treasurer, Christine Branch. Thank you for sending that stuff previously.
Oh, yes. You wanted to watch the videos?
Yes. And the slides.
And the slides.
Looks like she brought backup.
So, that was helpful.
Thank you.
You're up.
Please.
It says the Three Plus One Business Development.
And this is.
Kevin's aboard from Three Plus One. It's great to meet you all, and thank you for taking some time to listen to us today, and I've got my colleague, sorry, got my colleague Kyle Klein from the National Association of Counties as well. We've been working with Treasurer for about nine months, educating her on our digital platform and our software that we do, and what we do at Three Plus One is to make sure that she has the data that she needs to make sure that every dollar that she's entrusted with is providing value. And providing value, in our mind, is offsetting banking fees as well as earning as much interest as possible without sacrificing liquidity or, or safety at all, at all times. So, again, we have an innovative prior, or platform, and what we do is we look at every transaction that flows through every one of your bank accounts. We look at how long those dollars are available for and why that's powerful. So, if you know how long a dollar's available for, you know what it's, what its value is in the marketplace. So, we take all of this data, we provide this data in this, to Christie, so she can go to your banks, your financial providers, and make sure that they're earning and saving as much as possible. We work with counties across the country, from Hawaii to Alaska to Florida to North Carolina, and all sizes, from $6 billion budgets to $2 million budgets. And what we find is in finance departments and treasurers across the country is their needs vary by degree, not by kind. So, we have staffing, and she doesn't have time to do X, Y, and Z, and that's where we come in to make sure that Christie has all the resources she needs to earn and save as much as possible. To date, in the last 10 years of our company, we've helped generate $2.5 billion of new revenue, and we're not a bank, we're not a registered advisor, we don't take deposits. What we do is we provide data and act as an extension for a team to make sure that you can do your job for the best it can be done. Turn this over to Kyle for a second.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. No, that was a great summary. So, I'm Kyle Klein, I work for the National Association of Counties. I also happen to be a Howard County resident and taxpayer, the only employee at NACO that's a, that's an Indiana resident. So, I've been with NACO for seven years, and this program at Three Plus One, as Kevin had mentioned, we've endorsed them. We've offered this program to counties that we work with, and our, our mission at NACO, of course, is to strengthen America's counties. Every single day, we, we look for opportunities that we can drive innovation, just try to benefit and strengthen and make those communities healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And, and this program has done exactly that in, in that time. Their counties, Kevin had mentioned, you know, some of the smaller counties that we work with were from rural counties, Jones County, North Carolina, for example. This program has generated enough non-tax revenue to offset 14% of their tax levy. So, significant opportunities for, for revenue to plug, take care of budget gaps, pay for critical infrastructure for counties around America, and, you know, for them to hire staff, whatever the needs may be in the county. Sedgwick County, Kansas, it's a larger county, they're, they've offset about 1.5% of their tax levy. Being a large county, that's a significant portion for, for them. So, we've gone through, like, all of our NACO programs that we endorse, we go through about a year-long vetting process, and we went through this to make sure that this program would be of significant value to the counties that we serve, and also aligned with the NACO mission and values. So, we're here to serve you, and we're proud to partner with Kevin and Three Plus One, and we're excited and really appreciate Treasurer Branch considering this program and really looking forward. We would really appreciate, you know, the support and see what we can do with this program here in Howard County.
What counties in Indiana do you serve?
We're looking for our first one. So, again, it's, it's a new market for us, but it's one that we don't move into new markets until we can support them, so we're at an opportunity to do that now.
I, I should say, as part of the NACO agreement that we have, the partnership agreement that we have with Three Plus One, we do guarantee the revenue. So, in terms of taking the data and looking into what those opportunities might, might be in the initial analysis, and of course Kevin can talk about this, when they look at, gather all the banking transaction information and, and do the forward-looking forecasts, and this is an ongoing relationship, you know, the, the, it has to be a net benefit for the county, so, or there's no obligation to move forward. So, that's something that was important for NACO, to make sure our members, you know, felt comfortable taking advantage of, of this unique program.
And then, the next step would be that you guys would probably do some kind of contract? Is it a one-year contract? Is it a?
So, with our contract, it's a 30-day cancellation, but we do ask for one year to implement next steps, so you can realize the full benefit of the data. Typically, our contracts renew year over year. It's a flat fee. We don't get any upside unless, at all, so it's a flat subscription fee. But again, in our initial analysis, if we can't show you a net benefit, we shake hands and we walk away. There's not anything we can help you with, and it's not money that you should spend. Taxpayer dollars there shouldn't be spent. But in my three years here at Three Plus One, I have not seen anything lower than a five times ROI. We won't know until we do the analysis, but again, we continue to work on next steps and find out more ways to burn our feet year over year.
So, what's the downside for us?
Sorry.
Christie, I'm, I'm asking you, what's the downside for us?
The downside? I don't believe there's a downside. I believe this is something that would be, I mean, hopefully considered and necessary considering the fact that rates are dropping, they already have. So, we've seen the most desirable rates, and they're, they're decreasing pretty much daily. But I think this platform would be beneficial to safeguarding the funds.
So, if there's no downside, and there's, you said five times, you know, rate of return?
We won't know until we do the data, but yes, there has to be significant benefit.
On average, you've seen a good rate of return. Why are we the first county in Indiana?
In full transparency, we haven't had the staff, we have not had the team to build out into Indiana and new markets. So, that's part of what we're doing, selectively doing that, and having Kyle here is a nice resource as well, too.
Fees, when will we know fees?
So, the fees for a budget, we bill on budget size, and the fee would be $14,900. I have to reconfirm the budget with, with Christie, but I believe that's exactly where we came out with, and it's a flat subscription fee that can be paid monthly or quarterly, whatever works best for the county.
That's a lot of rate of return when you're talking five times.
Well, the data works.
We've had a good rate of return on our investment.
Yes.
But the goal is.
We've got big shoes to fill.
Well, it, it's not only that, but it's providing financial resiliency, right? So, if you're not taking advantage of fixed income and things of that nature, when the Fed changes rates in two days, it goes away.
Are you guaranteeing that?
Like, no guarantees, sir. But again, no crystal ball, but we know that interest rates have gone up and down for hundreds of years, they'll continue to do that. Our data's gonna make sure that you're doing everything you can in any rate environment to meet and exceed market rate benchmarks.
Even at five times, we'd be losing money. You understand that, right?
How's that?
Because we've done pretty good.
Absolutely. But again, what, the data, we'll, we'll present the data, and if Treasurer agrees that there's a benefit, then we move forward and help, and if we don't agree that there's a benefit, it's just on us. So, there's information in there on our services, how things work, so any questions that you do have.
You got, you got a comparison of different benchmarks in, in this, on page 10, I believe? And it's interesting. And are these current rates, or are they?
I think those were as of a little bit earlier this month.
Okay.
Yep. But that's the kind of data that we provide.
Okay.
Any other question?
And again, just to, Commissioner, just to let you know, again, we're not a bank, we're not a registered advisor, we don't take deposits, we don't move money. We provide the data and work and find opportunities for the treasurer and the county.
Has Allen looked at the contracts or have?
There is not a contract yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
Correct.
Bring in the information today, okay?
Yes.
He will look at it, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Good deal.
Are we looking for something from us to move forward, or is that what we're?
This was just an informational session, and I believe you all talked, Christie said she'll talk to you. And again, if there's any other information you need, I believe she circulated a couple of videos of webinars, very, very useful information there. Jones County is very small, Sedgwick County is quite large, but you can get, get an impression of what's going on there, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And information, you don't get anything from us tonight?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'll just have a discussion with you guys if that's fine afterwards, or at a later date.
Maybe with Allen's back from vacation.
Okay.
We can do that.
See you back next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Schedule with you guys. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next will be Mr. Stone Street, our Building Superintendent.
Good afternoon. The first item on the agenda is the drainage repairs we had at the Just Out Government Center. We had a cast iron drain line crack on us, which absolutely causes issues. After the inspection of that, we had, we had to move the line and, and get the fault correct on it also, but we inspected the whole run, and we have some cracks downrange that aren't terrible, but they're gonna have to be replaced. I haven't got the first invoice yet, it was emergency repair, so I went ahead and told them just to keep it under fire ground, we'll worry about it later, so they've got that done. I haven't got that invoice yet, but I'm hoping to keep this whole project under the cost of $8,000. So, I'm asking for a not-to-exceed permission or a not-to-exceed budget out of Coombe Cap Building Repair, 1138.47241.
And that's not to exceed 8,000?
Not to exceed 8,000. If it goes above that, I'll come back to you, or we'll figure out.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved, not to exceed 8,000.
Thank you very much. The next thing was the heat pumps for the Howard County Jail. On 9/11, we had a meeting with Allen Wilson, validated Consolidated Solutions, and the Wilson Learning Center to kind of discuss the bidding process and the peahermit process, and it does a satisfy State of Indiana, State Board of Accounts, and I think everybody's in agreement that we are on the right track and everything's correctly processed and ready, ready to pull the trigger on it. The issue is, we weren't really, I wasn't really clear, or none of us, I don't think, were on how we were gonna proceed, but now that we are, I'm assuming you gentlemen would like to go 100% fully at it and do the project in 2025, the whole big project all in one lump sum. So, with that being said, I'm working the, the scope of work and making sure, there was a lot of things in there that I didn't want in there, and I didn't want to work that problem until we were sure where we were going. So, I'm working that with Clay Davis from VCS, and I have to wait on some of the vendors to come back with pricing, and I have to wait on the manufacturer to come back with some pricing. All the changes that I'm making are gonna reduce the cost of the project, so I'm not doing anything that's gonna increase it. And then I want to throw in an extra $30,000 to make ceiling repairs if we have to, and when we, when we do this, it's gonna be pretty invasive in some areas, so I want to add a little additional cost for that. I was hoping to have this number in on October the 7th, but I am not gonna be in town on October the 7th. So, I'd like to just bump this up to October the 21st, and hopefully I have all the numbers and we're ready to, I'm ready to ask for permission to proceed on this project. So, that's kind of an update on, I don't need anything on it today, but if you have any questions for me, I'm certainly willing to answer anything you might have.
I certainly support moving forward, getting this project done. I know the City Council, I'll talk to them and they are as well.
Okay, good. We'll do it. It's a big one.
What's the lead time on getting those?
They're, they're gonna start producing those heat pumps on October the 15th. The makeup area units may take a little longer, but we could practically have these within 30 days if we placed an order. We're not gonna order all of them all at once, we're actually gonna piece them in in 15 at a time, that way there's just a storage issue, and they're willing to build them as we're ready to put them in, and it's, it's, it's an amazing factory up there.
Hey, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. And next on our agenda is the Guardian Advocates. We have the executive co-director.
Alicia.
Alicia.
Alacia.
All right. Well, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me here.
You bet.
I would like to provide you guys an update with our letter of intent, so I haven't seen you all sort of last year.
Could you give us your name and address, your podium, please?
Yep, Alacia Sturgis. I'm the Executive Director for Guardian Advocates West.
Good, thank you.
So, yes, sir, we are an adult guardianship organization. Last year, we had came to you guys with the same letter of intent. This one has been updated as of August of this year. I want to start off by saying thank you for your donations last year. It was very much appreciated. We were awarded 7,500 from the commissioners, and thank you very much for that. So, I am, I want to go over the numbers real quick as far as the individuals that we're serving in Howard County. Your number for appointed is at 12, however, as of Friday, I'm glad to say it is now at 14. So, we had two emergency guardianship cases that we were able to act promptly on, and with the help of some attorneys in the area, they were able to get us, and then the judges, of course, granting the guardianships. As you look down here, total referred for Howard County have been approximately 85 to 90. We receive referrals regularly for all of our counties, but primarily Howard County. These referrals aren't just for guardianship, they are for individuals who, family members may be wanting guardian themselves or need assistance, or just, we act as a resource agency as well in providing them direction and guidance where they can go to get plugged in with, like, Area 5 and Medicaid and Medicare's. So, that's what this, this bigger number down here reflects. So, if you look at the percentage out of all of the counties, we are serving Howard County at the highest percentage, and we do approximately, so Linda Johnson, who is now retired that I've taken the position for, who's come to you many years prior, implied our budgets are roughly around $230,000 a year. We have absolutely never made that expectation. We work from about approximately $120,000 budget, but if it was said 200, if, if I set it at a $200,000 budget, approximately, that would be about 80,000 based off of the percentage for Howard County. As of right now, the only funding that we get in Howard County is through you commissioners. So, last year, we did apply for the CDBG grant through the City Council. Those monies were used all the way through '24, but those were COVID funds, so those funds are no longer available. And we had received some funding through the community foundation. So, to be transparent in all this, I did apply for a $25,000 grant through United Way in which I had received a phone call on Friday that they were, they were not going to accept us at this time, unfortunately. My first time ever writing a grant, so I wasn't very sure of all the expectations, and, but next time going forward with my future grants, I will be sure to outline things more directly, because that's what was implied, was a problem with our, our grant. So, with that being said, the need, the number, it's still high. We are working on promoting, advocating, and directing these individuals' lives. I mean, we, we are two employees, there's me and my case manager that serve all five counties, and that's specifically what this funding is for. And I don't know if you remember or not, but we do work on a two-for-one matching grant through the Supreme Court. So, the Supreme Court allows up to $75,000 matching grants. If we get 10,000 for Howard County, we can apply for 20,000 through the Supreme Court. That does not always necessarily mean that we get those matching funds. There are other expectations, such as having at least 10 volunteers a year, we have to hire and train them, 10 guardianships a year, those are some of the other expectations with the grant. So, this last year for 2024, out of the 75,000, we were awarded 54,000 of that, and we have never seen that 75 match since 2019. So, I just wanted to give you the numbers, let you know, we're still in business, we're working hard, taking care of these individuals, getting referrals for individuals who are incapacitated, living in deplorable conditions every day, without family, and we continue, excuse me, to do our due diligence to make sure that their needs are being met. So, those ones falling through the cracks, and wanted to ask again this year if you would be willing to donate to our organization another $7,500 for 2025?
The other four counties donate as well.
What is it?
The other four counties?
They do, yeah. We go to commissioners and city councils. Cass County seems to be having difficulties this year, unfortunately, so they have not so much with their commissioners and city councils, but the other four county, other, excuse me, the other three counties, yes. And I've still got, so actually, Tipton Commissioners switched to a, a grant themselves, or City Council, excuse me, Tipton City Council switched to a grant themselves. So, I have to apply for a grant through them, and then their city council can approve it. The commissioners of Miami County, they have assigned, they've had us sign a three-year agreement for the $7,500 for '24, '25, and '26. So, however you see appropriate to donate to our organization, whatever, if you want, if you want quarterly reports on updates and stuff like that, I've also even put together, like, a slideshow to show the individuals that we're actually serving and how we are making a difference in their life, bringing them from deplorable situations to giving them the quality of life that they deserve. So, I'd like to present that to you guys sometime.
Are you located here in Howard County?
We were at the CAM Ministries, however, because of budget, we were offered an in-kind office space through the Galveston Baptist Church in Galveston, so we're very grateful for that as well. So, now we're in Galveston. But I serve primarily, I mean, 14 guardianships, that's a lot of legwork. I mean, they're, they're like our kids, you know, you're, you're taking a guardianship for an adult, essentially. So, we have about 36 adult guardianships in all, all, all the counties we serve right now.
I would like to take it under advisement, that's the one, what we can do.
Yeah, yeah, that should be that.
Yeah, I, I want to continue to support, I just don't want it at what level.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is take this under advisement, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
And try to see what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that. I will, again, I'm in my grant cycle, and I will be applying for the Supreme Court grant and any.
Supreme Court, Indiana?
Uh-huh. Indiana Supreme, VASIA Supreme Court grant. So, any contributions that come in, we have to provide them by October 18th, a letter confirming that the funds were awarded.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, fantastic.
Do that, we got your number, this number.
Yep, that's me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
It's a valuable service.
It is, and we work hard, it's, these people need it, bless their hearts, trust me. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is the Executive Director, Casa, Polly.
Good afternoon.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to request permission to complete the purchase of a vehicle for the Casa program. As I've spoken to, I know, council, and I believe in front of the commissioners in years past, we are serving children right now that are from Howard County that have been placed in foster homes. that have been placed in foster homes and residential facilities, into placements across the state. We have staff that travel to Sellersburg, South Bend, Elkhart. And I actually have to plan a trip to Milwaukee to do a home inspection, a home visit coming up in the next couple of weeks. So due in part to the shortage of foster homes, we're traveling more than we ever have. I've been meeting that need by reimbursing mileage for staff, trying to find rights with DCS when we can, which is not always the most appropriate solution because we don't want to be associated as working alongside DCS. We are separate entities. And we also sometimes will rent a car because often the distances that we're traveling, it's cheaper for me to pay for the enterprise car rental than it is to reimburse mileage. So it is something that has been necessary for the department for quite some time because when my staff are using their personal vehicles, obviously, it's putting quite a bit of wear and tear even without mileage reimbursement. So I'm here tonight to ask to spend the money that we received from that opioid grant to complete the purchase of the vehicle.
We've had some discussions on this, and there's a couple of options we'd like to look at. So again, this is one that we'd like to take under advisement so that we can discuss this.
I mean, I guess, is the council meeting next Tuesday? Is that correct? The council meeting would be next Tuesday? And is there some issue with the vehicle being held till next Tuesday? Or we're a week out from getting that vehicle? I guess is my question, one of my questions. I told Commissioner Dodd, that was one of my questions is, you know, this is not normal, typically the way that we do business.
It's a matter of moving some funds.
Right.
So I had an opportunity to talk to the auditor about how the best way to move this forward. It's not so much about holding the vehicle as it is the purchase of the vehicle. So it's, the money is there. The money is available in the opioid dollars, which we are, we had set aside for CASA. And so we felt like, between the auditor and I, we felt like the cleanest way to do this at this time was to just pay it out of there and then have either a tran. So we originally talked about a transfer out of CASA into, it got really messy. And so Jessica recommended that we do it this particular way, was just pay it all out of the opioid funds, just for a clean transaction.
So would it be an additional amount of money that we would be giving out of opioids? Or would be the money that we've already given?
It is the money we have already given, plus the money we have already agreed to. Because there's another, there's another small pot that we, that you guys had already approved to go to CASA.
We could do it out of the total and then work on the other one. And that's what Jessica would can do. Or we can take it under consideration and discuss it. Either way. What's your question?
Go ahead and, if they need the vehicle, purchase one, I think, there. You know, she said that's the way she'd like to do it, so.
Would you able to talk to Allen about this or?
Yes. Or you?
I emailed Allen, and I forwarded that email on to you, I thought. But that, he was fine with that. If I didn't, I will certainly do that.
I think I might recall that. I would personally like to take it under advisement. I'd make that motion.
The vehicle's already, like, it just needs the money. Is that correct?
Correct.
Because it's the money that they've already approved to give you. So that's why we were just trying to do it a little faster because we would have already missed the additional for the council meeting. And this way, it's coming out of the correct place instead of moving it to her and then back. So it made sense to just pay it all the opioid dollars, let her get the vehicle.
Is there, is the council have to reimburse the commissioners account?
No, because it comes out of the account that was, it comes out of the opioid account that you guys approved for CASA. Or the amount of money you approved for CASA.
So I have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second to that motion? So that motion dies without a second? So do we want to, do I hear anything else? Any questions or comments about doing this?
Like I said, I think, Sam, that they need the vehicle. The money's there. The auditors tell us how we should do it, the cleanest way. So I would make the purchase of the vehicle as suggested.
And my biggest issue was the reimbursement.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, moving on. Is there any new business coming forth, commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none, claims and reports, salary claims.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Salary claims are passed. Payroll expense.
Motion is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Operating claims. Have to wait two votes?
It is a lot.
Move to approve.
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Do we have any claims to write up, Sam?
None.
Do we have any monthly reports?
We have weights and measures, August 16th through September 15th, 2024.
More records received. Do we have any grants?
None.
Okay, thank you very much. Apparently we have no county attorney issues. Mr. Lekensky?
I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brean? Are there public comments to come before the commissioners tonight? Yes, sir.
Wayne Oliver, 5768 West, 000 South. I have a question, Mr. Stone Street. I didn't bring it up then, I'll bring it up now. Was there to be bids on that contract for the heat pumps? I remember one of the meetings that he said something about he didn't want them to underbid the company you were already working with. And so I just was curious as to where they're supposed to be bids.
I'll let Pam come up and talk about that because she attended a meeting here recently.
Okay.
Let her talk about that.
So Allen and I met, county attorney and I met with the Wilson Learning Center. They are an approved through State Board of Accounts vendor negotiator. So they went out for public bid for the bids for the heat pumps. That was done through this vendor company that we did not know anything about. They have given us a letter that they are approved by State Board of Accounts. And they have different vendors that they do go out for. They write the RFP for equipment only. And when they did that, they were the ones who came in. So they, I have a copy of the advertisement, I have a copy of the RFP, and I have a copy of the letter from the State Board of Accounts. So it was all done under the procurement process through the Wilson Learning Center.
We had Allen and Pam meet with them because we really wanted to make sure it was State Board of Account approved. So that's why they met with them.
Because we had that same question, and that's why we met with them. So that did happen. Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment coming forth, commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We stand and adjourn.